This is the June 2 meeting of the Rockport's zoning board of appeals meeting. I would actually like to start this meeting on a note that has nothing to do with the zoning board of appeals, but a colleague of mine, Mr. Bill Chapman, died yesterday, and he was a longtime member of many committees and also on the select board as chair of the select board for a while, so I just want to remember him and his fine works towards the community. So, getting on the ZBA business, Leah, you want to set us up for what we're doing today?
Sure, thanks, Mr. Chairman. So, I think we, before us, have two appeals relating to the Rockport Hotel. The first is a continuation of the appeal with respect to the planning board's decision, and when we left, Matt, the, I think, we were requested to put together some draft findings, which we circulated to all councils, and I believe Orion was kind enough to circulate them to board members, and so I think what we'd like to do is to go through those. Of course, those are drafts only, and it's incumbent upon the board to exercise their independent judgment, make sure that they accurately reflect your deliberations from last time, and, you know, go through it, go through them, make sure that they're, you know, and point out any questions, concerns, suggested edits, and then, at the end, we've got to make sure that a final vote is taken with respect to whether or not the board wants to grant or deny the appeal. So, that's the first order of business, and then the second, if I understand it, is to entertain the second appeal with respect to the building permit, also in conjunction with the hotel, but I think first order of business is to complete the board's work with respect to the first appeal.
All right, and as usual, we will, prior to board's discussion, we will also open it up for a brief comments from the public on that particular matter. So, the document in question is the 11-page Findings of Facts that we got a couple of days ago. I guess, having just said that about public appearance, is there anyone who would like to speak on this matter, either pro or against? Surveying the prairie, we see no one, so on with our discussion and note-taking of these fine notes. Anybody have any questions about what's on here, or any, did you see anything in a different It appears to me to be quite comprehensive in the appropriate amount of looking back and looking forward.
I have a stupid question. I followed it all fine, it didn't interfere with my overall comprehension, but for some reason, well, on page four, I understood what was referred to as the AP action mid-page.
Right.
Then when it came down to the CV action, I just want to be clear that I understand what that phrase means. Again, even though I could follow it all, I couldn't find a reference to CV action. What does CV as opposed to AP?
Sure, so, as the board is probably likely aware, there were two law due. The first was what we called the CV action, that's a civil action, and if I remember correctly, that was the declaratory judgment request from Judge Lee. So, CV, just in court terms, refers to a civil action.
I now understand, yeah.
Yeah, and AP is the appeal.
The appeal, okay.
What they call the AP.
Thank you.
Terry is now running away in fear because she actually worked at a lawyer's office for many years.
Humiliate me more.
No, no, no. You're very thorough.
Well, that's why I'm thorough.
You're very thorough.
What we will do, and thank you for pointing this out, is that, you know, we want to make sure, oh, yes, there is a prior reference to the CV action on paragraph 13 of page four.
Yep, and 15 refers to AP action.
Okay, there it was, I just, my eyes just could not find it this afternoon, thank you, everyone. Right, cool.
Any other questions or comments on findings of fact? If we so decide at the end by vote, these will create our response to the first appeal and will be in permanent record, as they say in grade school. That's going on your permanent record.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure exactly what your process is, but, you know, before we turn to the next appeal, I think you want to make sure that you take an ultimate vote on, A, whether to adopt these findings either as written or as amended as be fit, also to take a final vote as to whether to vote, excuse me, to deny or grant the appeal, and then also to authorize you as chair to sign those findings, so that you don't have to come back to another meeting in due time.
Yeah, we are in the old man's section right now, portion of the meeting where we are stumbling over ourselves to see if there's any other questions and everything, and we do have a question from Tyler. Tyler, why don't you come on up to where the mics are, either way.
Tyler Smith, representing 20 Central LLC. Just a clarification question, Leah, on the footnote one, on page one, the language and date you have differed from the May 26 letter, did you receive additional correspondence different from the Ms. Collins letter on 26th?
Can you hear Tyler, okay?
I'm sorry, I'm having, I'm struggling to hear him.
Sorry, Leah, this was a question on footnote number one, on page one, and it was with regard to the May 29 correspondence from Claire Tully, and it seems to differ in the discussion whether Friends of Rockport are still part of this appeal or not, and it differs from the May 26 letter that was received from Ms. Collins.
As I understand it, the correspondence that I got subsequently from Ms. Tully, I can try to bring it up, on the 29th, basically said that that was in error, the prior one, there was a misunderstanding there, and that Rockport, excuse me, Friends of Rockport was in fact not participating further.
Okay, okay, thank you, so it supersedes the May 26 letter from Ms. Collins, that's your understanding?
I believe so.
Okay.
All right, any other questions?
And actually, Mr. Chairman, it's helpful, it's very brief, so why don't I just read it into the record, I'm not sure if it actually is in the record, would that be okay, Mr. Chairman?
Sure, yes, please.
So, I'm reading from an email from Claire Tully to me, CCing Attorney Collins, dated Sunday, May 29, at 10:11 a.m. Dear Ms. Grayton, I write to you on behalf of Friends of Rockport, I want to clear up some unfortunate confusion that resulted over our May 23 letter to the editor and Kristen Collins' May 26, 2022 letter to the ZBA. I consulted Kristen, who is unavailable over Memorial Day weekend, to amend her letter, but encouraged me to write you directly. I would like to clarify that SOR, Friends of Rockport, is withdrawing from both the building permit appeal and the appeal of the planning board's decision. I apologize for contact days over the weekend, but given that the June 2 hearing is imminent, the Friends of Rockport wanted to communicate the clarification, thank you, and enjoy the holiday. So, I think that's pretty clear.
And that was authored by Claire?
It was, in her capacity as president, Friends of Rockport.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for the clarification.
Any other questions, comments about the findings of fact, after which we will have three actions that we will take? Mine's much swifter than mine, I've tirelessly worked this through. All right, so I look for a motion to vote to accept these findings of fact as presented.
So, move it.
Terry, had a hand up, and we'll take you for the second.
Second.
All right, and any...
Should we include the thing "as written," or?
I think my suggestion of the thing said "as written," which Ben will get when he gets to work on these.
Do we need to include that we authorize you to sign, or is that separate?
That'll be separate.
That's the third thing.
So, any discussion on the motion, and any voting going on? We'll do it linearly.
I vote aye. Yay.
Yay.
Aye.
I'm sorry.
Yay.
Okay, five to zero. We do want to make a comment that inactive member Kim Graffin did not show up because she has historically, through this set of proceedings, recused herself. So, the board, which sits at six members right now, has five voting members. The second thing we want to do on this final vote is to deny or grant the appellate's appeal. We want to, somebody put that more elegantly than I am.
Mr. Chair, are we going to go through each section of this, as I said, comments on conclusions of law? What do we get?
Of each section, as in, as the next thing, or as in what we just are looking at?
Well, we, finding the fact, section two, section three would be...
Standard of review?
Is it?
Is that where you're at?
I'm not sure exactly how we're proceeding.
Well, we are at the point where we, well, the previous vote has indicated that we accept the whole thing and have finished making comments on it. Do you want to go back and make comments?
I'm sorry, I thought you were just talking about the findings of fact section. Did you talk about the entire order?
This entire 11-page order, yeah.
I'm sorry, I do have two comments on the conclusions of law.
Okay, so, let's just do a quick recess to see whether we need to undo the vote and then re-vote, or whether we just go to modify it.
Mr. Chairman, I can speak to that, you know, I didn't write down what the motion was, but the board members absolutely correct, these are called findings of fact and conclusions of law, broken down into the findings of fact section. If there are revisions to the conclusions of law section, I think that, I think that we can have that discussion, and we can incorporate those.
We can proceed and then vote on that, I'm sorry, that sounds fine. Thank you, Bob, why don't you start in with your comments and your questions?
Okay, first of all, I'd like to say that this draft is very well done, it's impressive work. My comments are not negative comments, they're simply add-on comments, and I'd like to go to page eight, subsection B, and just some language I'd like to add at the end of subsection B. That language is as follows, "Moreover, a site plan visit was not prohibited by the Superior Court order and is specifically allowed by sections 1302 and 1304 of the land use ordinance," period, end.
Okay, do I hear a, we'll take that as a motion, so do I hear a second on the motion?
Second.
Discussion. Okay, and your comments are supported by 1302 and 1304? All right, voting, we'll start at this end. Mr. McCool.
Yay.
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 Five to zero for interstitial addition. Anything else, or?
One other, on page nine, subsection E, again, an addition at the end of subsection E, that being, even if this amendment did apply, it allows the planning board or the code enforcement officer to review the study, and we understand the code enforcement officer has done so.
All right, did everybody get that? Being a motion to change, is that a question, or is that a second?
It's a question, is it the time to do it?
Let's second and then discuss.
Okay, okay, sorry.
I see your second.
So, my question is, yes, I recall that being in the meeting, and should, and I agree, that should be included, but I don't recall whether any specific statement of fact was made about the code officer having reviewed the traffic study. Was proof given to that, or was there some kind of record? I'm not questioning that he did, but I just don't recall it in the meeting, because we were going to be addressing that in the building permit thing, I mean, because I just don't want to enter into the record something of fact that we didn't...
I understood it from the materials relating to the building permit.
So, you were inferring, or do you recall actual statement?
I think I'm inferring, I think that's the right term.
And does that make a difference in your mind or not?
Well, that's why I said, we understand that.
Okay, okay, fair enough, okay, I'm comfortable.
Mr. Chairman, if I can offer something, I think, I think it is important that there be a, you know, this is an unusual situation where we have two appeals going on at the same time, right? But I think it's important that we make sure that that piece of information is actually within the record of the planning board's appeal. We absolutely know that that information is in the next appeal, that's in the record of the building permit appeal, and, but I think your point is well-taken, that if it does not appear in the record of the planning board's decision, then we may decide that keeping it out is the best approach, and I don't know, factually speaking, whether or not that was in the record before the planning board.
Well, since we have the planning officer here, perhaps we can ask him.
Mr. Orion.
As if, yeah, restate your question.
Well, the issue is whether the code enforcement officer has actually studied the parking study.
The code officer did study the traffic study.
Well, if I understand, it's not that, it's a matter of timing.
Exactly, it's about the record below, right, is that, you know, we know from the next appeal that the code officer did receive and consider the traffic study, but that's part of a separate appeal, and the knowledge, and I think the wording that was suggested, that we understand that the code officer has done so, you certainly, I know that is your understanding, but it's based on a record for a separate and distinct appeal, perhaps. The question is whether or not the code enforcement officer's review of the traffic study was part and parcel of the administrative record on the appeal from the planning board's decision. I can't answer that question as a factual matter, I don't know the answer to that question, but my sense is, is that if it wasn't, then we err on the side of caution and don't include it. If somebody can point to that, then by all means, it makes perfect sense to include, but if we can't, I would say that we don't, because we have to keep our records separate in the event that there's an appeal, we've got to make sure that everything, every finding and conclusion is based on the record of that particular appeal, if that makes sense.
So, no judicial notice?
I don't think this board can do that.
Okay, then I'll amend my recommendation.
So, it sounds as though we're going to bifurcate that from this particular...
And we can do that, and I'll read you amended language.
Okay, we have a second, let's go through and vote that, vote as appropriate.
How about this, I'll withdraw that motion.
There you go, second withdraws.
Second withdraws.
Excellent, thank you, so starting fresh.
Okay, it basically, it cuts off the end, it would read as follows, "Even if this amendment did apply, it allows the planning board or the code enforcement officer to review the study," period.
I second that, and I do recall that one thing brought up during the meeting, just not the second.
All right, we are moved, seconded, any additional comments, starting with the author?
Aye, vote aye.
Yay, yes?
Aye.
Yes, five to zero for the interim, any other observations?
I have nothing else.
Thank you, anybody else have anything else on the right here? And we have, we're going ahead with the idea that we have findings of fact, and then we have conclusions, and that's what we'll vote on next, which is to say the remainder of this 11-page document, which are conclusions. Anybody want to make a motion to accept them as accurate?
I move that we accept the findings of fact and conclusions of law as amended.
Okay, second.
Second.
Terry? Comments? And voting?
Aye.
Yay, yes?
Yes.
Okay, that's five to zero, and now, having accepted the entire document, known as findings of fact, we should vote on, someone should make a motion about accepting or denying the appeal.
I move we deny the appeal.
Any seconds?
Second.
Okay, team is well-oiled. Any comments besides my own? All right, starting at Max's end, this is to deny the appeal.
Yes.
Yes, to deny.
Yes.
Yes, to deny.
Yes.
Aye.
Okay, five to zero for the first appeal, and then finally, does the board authorize the chair to sign the final paperwork?
So, move it.
Second.
We don't want to wear it out for the good stuff. Max?
Ah, yes.
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 Very good. Five to zero. All right, Scott is my co-pilot, and Leah's right behind. So, that takes care of our first appeal that was originally started.
What we need to offer is you to sign.
Yeah, yeah. So, now we're onto the CEO complaint.
Okay.
We have a nice table up here with some microphones on it, and we have parties of interest, and I think, Leah, do we decide that we might want to start with Scott and have him lay out the groundwork?
Yeah, sure, I mean, if you would like me to do just kind of an overview of why we're here, and just some legal points, and then me to go into that, I'd be happy to.
That would be okay.
I think it may be helpful to have a reprieve of the court orders, and how those will inform the board's work this evening.
All right.
Is that okay, would we do that?
Yes.
Okay, so, just to refresh everybody's memory, this is the second appeal with respect to the hotel, that this board is entertaining. The board dealt with the first one with respect to the planning, the appeal of the planning board's site plan approval. Now before you is the appeal of the building permit that was issued by the code enforcement officer for the 20-room hotel. Now, again, just from a procedural standpoint, I wanted the record to reflect that, you know, further to that email that I just read into the record, the prior appeal that Friends of Rockport have withdrawn from this appeal, so it is my understanding, just based on correspondence from Attorney Collins, that Mr. Priestley, who was named as an individual appellant rather than a justice member of Friends of Rockport, has expressed an intention that he would like this appeal to proceed, and so I think in the findings, it should reflect that Friends have withdrawn, they were named appellant on the application, and that Mr. Priestley is the sole remaining appellant, okay? Let me just turn to the court orders, as you remember, there were several, I'm just going to try to distill them down to their essence, I'm going to use those, that verbiage CV, AV, AP, that alphabet soup, with respect to the CD action, there were three counts, and, you know, I'm not going to go through anything with respect to the planning board's reviews, I'm going to limit my comments to the building permit. Basically, count one of the CD action sought a declaratory judgment ruling that the amendment of petitions A and B, the number of rooms and the requirement for a parking and traffic study, that those applied to that hotel. Count two sought a rescission of the building permit, and sought, count three, basically was similar, it was looking for a remand back to the board and also the CEO for compliance with the C amendment. And so, that's what, that's what that CD appeal was, CD action is about, and the focus of the court analysis really was about when the amendments became effective, and the critical issue, and I'm just reading it as it was articulated by the court, basically was, in light of the timing of the enactment of the petition, did the planning board's site plan approval entitle 20 Central the right not only to build the hotel with the specified outer dimensions, but also to build a specific hotel, it contemplated, including interior configuration? As you remember, there was a difference between, I think the court made a distinction between the exterior of the building and the interior of the building. Basically, the thought was, with respect to exterior review, that was much more a planning board analysis, whereas the interior, like the number of rooms, was something that the code enforcement officer was charged with. And so, ultimately, they found, the court found, the site plan review process and the building permit process were separate and distinct, and that there were no vested rights in a particular building plan based on an earlier approval of a site plan. So, the upshot of that, was the practical upshot, is that they won, the Friends of Rockport and the folks objecting to the hotel, they won on the request to find the petition's amendment applied to the building permit. So, when you are reviewing this, you need to understand that both petitions A and petition B, again, with respect to the number of rooms that were allowed, only 20, any hotel cannot exceed 20 rooms, and also the requirement for a traffic and parking study, those do apply to the building permit analysis, and so when you consider whether or not the code enforcement officer's decision should be upheld, you need to, you need to review it with that lens. Another issue was about whether, so the Friends had asked the court to vacate the building permit because of inconsistencies between the site plan and the building permit, and because it deviated from the terms of the site plan approval, the court said no, at least that was my understanding, the court said no, that this issue was presented previously to the ZBA, and that it could not now be disturbed. Now, I believe that that issue was somewhat addressed in passing, and that it was specifically with reference to the retractable roof, and with respect to the assembly usage, but I think there is a reasonable interpretation of the court orders that basically say that even though the building permit deviates from the terms of the site plan, that that is not reason to vacate, but I think it's important to hear from the parties on that point, you know, that's my analysis, but they may have a different view. So, I think that, you know, like anything, all of these points, we're going to ask the attorney to the, to the parties to speak on that. And just before we move on to the substance, I think it is important, like I said, to ask the parties whether or not they have any substantial agreement, disagreement, other thoughts with respect to my analysis of the court orders, and how they kind of frame what your work is producing.
Thank you. Why don't we bring as many of the parties to the table physically, so that it's more of a conversation? If that makes sense to you guys?
Gather round.
Sharing is caring on the mic plus.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not familiar, I can't identify Mr. Priestley, but I was just wondering if he's actually there.
Negative, he is not here.
Okay, all right, so in that case, you know, just out of an abundance of fairness, as we go through each of the grounds of appeal, I think it's important, I feel it's authorized me to do so, just to give a very brief synopsis of what those grounds are, so that then, you know, other folks can respond to that, fair, compliant, but I think for the record, it's important to articulate what those grounds are.
Yeah. Yeah, and, and you feel it's best to break the six points down and take them each one at a time?
I, I do, but before we get down, I think it is important to give folks an opportunity to make sure they agree with or maybe round out anything that I've mentioned about the court orders and how they impact tonight's proceeding.
All right. Starting with Scott, in the overview, how do you feel about the characterization?
I think she's done a nice job with that. In the building permit, I actually had a overview quite similar to that, along with some details, and it's on the same trail, so. Thank you, Leah.
I'm going to let Andre maybe speak first for 20 Central Street. I'll see if that's all right.
Sure.
Certainly, I don't have any objections to Leah's synopsis, I think it's, it's on point. I guess I would, I guess I would ask, as we move forward relative to this appeal, whether or not, if we're just going to be relying on the arguments made by the letter that was submitted two days ago by Attorney Collins, given that there's nobody else here today to argue on behalf of the appellate?
Well, I think that our counsel, Leah, has expressed the desire and ability to fill in any holes that might be missing that, from our comprehension and what the appellate is asking, but we're going to try and, and treat the appellate as fairly as possible without bending over backwards into...
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I could clarify, I simply, I am not an advocate for anybody's position. My, my sole role here is simply to advise the board. I'm simply saying that I would articulate or enumerate as they are, they have done, just to say what frame, basically frame up the grounds of appeal unless the various parties address them. I am not taking any position, I'm not advocating any position, and I certainly wouldn't want to put any sin on a position. Just basically identifying what those grounds of appeal are in the most objective way possible, just so it frames the discussion. I see Attorney Sausier has his hand up, too.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I just, I, I think you would ask the both to weigh in on, on your recitation of the court. Now, I agree, Andre, I, I agree with the way you articulated where the court has ruled. I'm glad you just said that, Leah, though, because I was about to object to any, to any articulation of any appeal or quote-unquote "filling in the holes." It, it really speaks for itself. There's a letter I think you should just use as a checklist and address each one and not get into the arguments. It is what it is. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't suggest that, that you go through their arguments in detail if they're not here to present them. I think you just use it as a, as a checklist and will respond to it. Thank you very much.
The, the chair takes note of your sage comments.
So I think the only thing I want to add to Leah's comments there is the court, there were two citizens' petitions that the court ruled on in this process, and part of the fine line they had to walk was if implementation of these two petitions required revision of the site plan, it actually invalidated the petitions for this project. So there, there's a, there's a state statute that does not allow, the time had passed for site plan review. So these two petitions only apply to the building permit. If they were found to in any way require us to go back and revise the site plan, they would have not, they would not apply it at all.
Because they've fallen outside of...
Uh, because we would have acquired vested rights associated with our site plan approval. So the court system determined that although we had an approved site plan for a 26-room hotel, the court indicated that the, the word 26-room was more of a, a title of this, and did not feel in any way that we had vested rights to build 26 rooms specifically. If any of these required to go back and, and do this. So, so none of these petitions in the court order related to the site plan approval at all. And it's kind of one of those things where if it, if it did, then they wouldn't apply. So there's a little bit of a catch-22 associated with there. The, the court did not feel we acquired any vested rights for that room count.
Mr. Chairman, if I can, perhaps, you know, I, I hate interpreting words. I, I'm looking at one of the orders of the court, perhaps that speaks the most eloquently to this or at least pointedly to this. I'm reading particularly from, I think what maybe Attorney Sausier can correct me if I'm wrong, but I have a March 3rd, 2022 order, which I think may be the last of the orders of both judgment orders. And it says that the defendant, County Rockport, asked for clarification whether the site plan was vacated or the matter sent to be remanded. And then it concludes here, it says, I, I think, it says, "The court's decision therefore, which does not specifically vacate the site plan, stands unaltered." And my interpretation of that is that, you know, you have the site plan. The site plan was based on 26 rooms, and the court here, I think, articulated that it was not, it was not vacating that plan. So the implication of that is that it stands and that the petition that required 20 rooms is certainly, and the, and the court made very clear, that that petition applied to the building permit, but because the site plan was not vacated, I think the implication by the court is that that site plan stood and stands still.
Leah, was, is that the January 3rd, 2022? I think you said March 3rd.
No, that actually, I'm not sure if that is in, I don't think that's in the record.
It is. On page three of that January site, dated January 3rd, 2022, it says that it, that the court reverses the approval of their building permit by the code enforcement, and just vacates the building permit, says nothing about site plan review or anything. So I just wondered if I was looking at the right document.
No, you, you are looking at a different document. That's the January 3rd.
Right.
But I think what I'm seeing here is that there was some subsubplant post-motion, there were additional motions after that order that you were reading. But I think my takeaway from this March 3rd, 22, excuse me, March 3rd, 2022 order is basically saying, I meant what I said, you know, in that January 1st, that January 3rd order, and I'm not changing my mind. But I think Attorney Sausier has his hand up, and he was there, he can probably speak better to it than I can.
I didn't know whether you had a slip of the tongue or not.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I think, I, I think we're getting a little too much into the weeds before we get into the actual appeal here. I, I did want to point out to Leah and the board that the board has actually already made a finding on this in the other appeal, sort of the law of the case, if you will. You just approved findings. This specifically said that the applicant was not required to seek and obtain a site plan amendment, and you cited these cases that Leah just cited, too. So it's rate, it's already in something you've adopted. I, I would just suggest that that's, is what it is on this one, and maybe, it sounds like we're getting into the substance of argument number one right now at this point.
Fair, fair enough. One thing I will say that I don't think we've addressed is the standard of review, and I'm not trying to cut off discussion. If both parties still want to address the court orders themselves, then by all means, but I just did not want to forget before we get into the substance with respect to the standard of review.
Well, my take on the Superior Court order was that they did not order a site plan amendment, even though they reduced the number, the maximum number of rooms to 20. So that says to me that they thought that the site plan was consistent with 20 rooms. The court found that the site plan approval and the permitting process did not tie to any particular internal configuration. So if the site plan could apply to a 26-room hotel or a 20-room hotel, did not need to be amended. That's my takeaway from the Superior Court.
All right. So shall we, at this point, so that was presumably going to be an overview.
Yeah, sorry, I took, I took you down the weeds a little bit, so.
No, no, that's, that's, that's how you get sand in your shoes. So the first, let me go back to that. Leah, do you want to pick up and just touch base on the first of the six specific motions?
I'd be happy to, but before we do, I think I really do want to talk to the board about what this governing standard of review here is.
Oh, I got you, that's right.
Basically, and it's important to note this because you may recall that the last time you did a review of a building permit decision, that that was, it used to be de novo review, and what that means is that basically you start from scratch, start all over again and see whether or not that decision was correct. But since then, in November of 2021, the land use ordinance has been amended to clarify that it is no longer a de novo review. This board actually now engages in an appellate review of the code enforcement officer's decision. And so that's much like what you did the last time around, and I can just read to you from the, the new language you're using. And so it basically says, "An appeal from the board," excuse me, "an appeal to the board from decisions of the code enforcement officer. The board shall review the record of the code enforcement officer's decision to determine whether the code officer's decision was made in conformance of Chapter 600, which is the administration provision, whether it abused of the officer's discretion or not supported by substantial correct evidence." So that is your task. You're not taking new evidence in today. You're basically saying, okay, what was before the code enforcement officer, and was that decision consistent with the requirements of the ordinance and the evidence format?
Leah, could you, for the aid of the board, read through the record, the section 707, the reapplication for appeal?
You can certainly do that, if that's something you want to raise.
I'd be happy to, if the board's fine with that.
We'll, we'll raise it later.
Okay, thank you, Andre.
All right, so, so you, you know the timing and when you want to bring that in, and it's not now?
Yes.
Okay. Yep, very good. So that's section 707. All right. So, thank you for the, the, it's not de novo, it's appellate. It's the appeals process. Code enforcement officer cannot have issued the building permit. Shall we hear the overview of that?
Sure. I mean, it, we, we have, in the record, you have both the applications dealt, which articulate six enumerated grounds of appeal, and that they are further rounded out by the submissions by Attorney Collins on May 31st. So as I said, I am not taking any position at all. All I was planning on doing is just basically reading out what that first round of appeal was, is, and then the parties who are present can make their submissions on that. So the first ground basically was that the CEO cannot have issued the building permit for this project because it did not in conformance with the May 2020 site plan approval. Site plan amendment was required to change the number of guest rooms from 26 to 20, as this materially impacts the review standards as applied to the prior issued permit. So that's the ground of appeal. I think it was, you know, amplified, there were some submissions as to why that is, some of the May 31st submission, which you have, I'm not going to credit, and now it's up to the parties present to make their, their submissions in that regard.
All right. Starting with Scott.
Any question?
Any questions?
No, your question.
Oh, oh, and the question is, is, do you want to present any, the overview that addresses that?
I'm happy to, I'm happy to step in, Scott, to, like, to address this, if you have.
At what point?
Well, let's, let's have Phil take us through that trip, and then if we have specific questions.
Well, I looked at that.
Yeah, this one seems like, this one seems like it's a specific legal question, quite frankly, not about the application of the building permit itself, but I think it's actually a, we actually just kind of discussed it, this particular issue, that's sort of the colloquy we just had, and that the board has already previously made a finding on in the last, the last appeal. So as Leah summarized, and I agree with her summary of the court order, the court specifically separated out the site plan process from the building permit process. And the court did that, and the court had to do that because otherwise, the, the amendments could not have been retroactive. So what the court said specifically was the site plan, the amendments did not apply to the site plan, it was separate, it was remanded back for additional findings on those issues, and, and, and made some findings in its order, saying essentially that these are separate and we're looking at the exterior, and it doesn't, it even said, the planning board uses the term 26 rooms, almost as, just an iteration of what was in the application, and sort of made light of it in some ways. And said, on the other hand, the, the building permit is a separate process, and they, and they found, and the court found that the amendments did apply to the building permit. So we're, we're sort of in the realm here of following the court's orders. The court has told us what to do in this case, it's, we're obviously brought to the court in two separate matters, and the court has, has made these findings that have kept it separate. And I just, just to be consistent, I, I referred to a couple times, you just made this finding, and that was, just so I, specifically what you just, what you just adopted, and it's in the conclusions of law, it's in section F, where the board just found that the applicant was not required to seek and obtain a site plan amendment for the planning board to consider, or appeal, and that you recite why it was separate, that, that you could have 20 rooms rather than 26 through the building permit process. So this was fairly straightforward, I think it's an argument we just went through in the last appeal and as part of the summary. So I, I would just leave it at that, and I apologize if I go a little bit slow, a little out of the weather. So if I sound like I'm a little slow, it's because I am right now, but I'm trying my best.
No worries, you eclipsed most of us. Any other reaction from you guys on what's been presented?
No. I addressed what was remanded back from the court, and that is attached in the building permit was, you have all that information in front of you. Nothing's changed, except the 20 rooms instead of 26, that is.
All right. I, I don't think I'll get any takers, but I'll, what I'll do is at the end of, prior to our discussion as a board, I'll ask for any public input. So, public input on this matter, the first of six, searching, searching, closing the public.
I don't know if anybody can see me.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can.
Yeah, just, just wave right at your camera, and then we'll notice you. Go ahead.
All right. Yeah, I just want to reiterate some of what Attorney Sausier had indicated, but again, I, I, I didn't want to take an opportunity on each one of these issues. Number one, I think the board needs to make a determination as to what you have before you is just the initial appeal. There was no memo or anything that was provided with it or shortly thereafter. And so, one, I, I'd like a decision, at least for the record, whether or not this board is going to accept Attorney Collins' letter of two days ago as arguments on, on behalf of the appeal. I, I think, one, I don't think it's timely, so I think there needs to be a determination made by the board in that regard, given the fact that there's no one there today to argue on their behalf. And then, two, if that is in fact the case, then that, the only arguments on the record are what are submitted in their appeal application, as well as that letter. I, I think that needs to be addressed to start.
All right, thank you. Leah, I'll, I'll tip my hat to the, to the thought that this six, five-page letter from Attorney Collins would fit nicely in the timeframe, the time limits that we would have for, for presenting stuff. And so whilst it came to us on May 31st, and not 15 days prior, or 12 days prior, I'm inclined to allow it out of, in abundance of fairness. Any reaction to that? Oh, you're on mute.
Sorry, you're asking me, Mr. Chairman, for my reaction in that regard?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I, I think that in Attorney Collins' preparatory comments, that she does talk about how that 15-day in advance doesn't necessarily mean submissions, it's probably the application itself. The fact that the parties and their counsel are here making their own submissions, I, I think that you do have the discretion, and in fact, I think... And in fact, I think in prior hearings, not that it has to be prologue, but I don't think if there's anything in your bylaws or the ordinance that's clear that I think you have accepted testimony, not testimony, excuse me, written submissions, you know, I seem to recall the day before, the day of even, so I don't, I, you know, I think it's in your discretion whether or not you accept it.
Any discussion on our motions from the board?
I think Attorney Sausier may have something to say about that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would just make a comment and defer to the board on what it wants to do here, but I will make a comment, because this has come up in other occasions. I do think there's a difference in presenting testimony day of, as opposed to the basis for the actual appeal. So people do show up at meetings, you're allowed to testify, make comments, have the board respond to it. But for the basis of the appeal itself really should be in the application. It's fair to the parties, so that you have an ability to respond. And we don't usually take, for example, testimony, maybe you raise five points in a testimony, but the board wouldn't go through each of those in the same way you would with the actual appeal document. I say it as a comment, because in this case, I do think we should go through them anyway, in abundance of caution, because I don't want to raise any appealable event. I'd rather just deal with it now. But I do think it's, I don't think it's good practice to allow an appeal to be essentially amended. And I brought this up vociferously, if some of you guys are still on the board, back in the building permit appeal of the library, where there was additional arguments being brought up day of, and I argued that that was not fair to the applicant. But I think, so anyway, I just want, just to be consistent, I still believe that, but I do think we should go through these just for sake of, for dealing with it, because I'd hate to have any kind of arguing in the future that you were supposed to have dealt with it. So, thank you.
Well, we appreciate you seeing both sides of the fence. Any board comments and/or motion to accept this letter of May 31, 2022, as, to accept it in our package?
So moved.
Any seconds?
Second.
Max, discussion?
I'm inclined to agree with everything Attorney Sausier just said. I agree that it's late. I agree that that's not good practice, but to come all this way, to sit here with the arguments in front of us and not go through it, probably does open it up for appeal down the roads. I don't think we should do that. We're here. Let's talk about it.
Yeah, I agree with Max. I think the abundance of caution phrase has been used multiple times, and when lawyers use that, it's probably wise to listen.
Right, we stand up and salute. All right, any other comments? Motion and second are on the table, which was you for the motion and Max for the second. And let's see how we vote. Max?
Aye.
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 Thank you, five to zero. Moving on, we will use this along with the original administrative appeal as our guideline to where we're going. So, we have, have we discussed enough about the separation of the site plan and the permit to start to discuss and vote on number one? We've gotten a pretty good read on that.
I think Andre has a question.
Thank you for noticing those. Andre, just shove your hand right into your camera, that's the best way we see.
Okay. I don't know if you can see me on the camera at all. So if we are in the process of discussing issue number one, then I didn't want to speak briefly in that regard, and I think, Todd, where I brought up earlier, the-
707?
What's that?
Is this 707? Or is it?
Yeah, the application of 707. And so, and with respects to this initial appeal, in the prior appeal, they had brought up the very issue of the, and I'll read it verbatim, the applicant is prohibited from building a 26 hotel room approved by the planning board, and any further consideration of this project, even a remand required site plan amendment showing the reduction of the number of rooms from 26 to 20. And then, in, with respects to issue number one, it's essentially a same question, it's saying that the building permit for this project, because it was not in conformance with the May 2020 site plan approval, site plan amendment is required to change the number of the guest rooms from 26 to 20, as this materially impacts the review standards applied in prior issued permit. So, we are essentially, it's a rehash of the same issue on appeal that was just before this board, not too long ago. I think, similar to what happened essentially last year, June, around this time, where we had a similar issue with respect to the application of 707, I think that still applies. To the extent that does apply, I'm happy to speak more in depth about the actual arguments made.
Andre, I just want to make sure that the board has access to that particular section.
Yeah, so this is reapplication for appeal?
That is correct.
Yeah. It's short, so I'm going to just read it out. This is on page 7-4 of three iterations ago, because we were just discussing, this is the June 12th revision. But I assume, gentlemen, that that has stayed the same.
That's my understanding.
So, section 707, reapplication for appeal. If the Board of Appeal shall deny an appeal, a second appeal affecting the same premises and requiring the similar decision shall not be heard by the board within six months from the date of denial by the Board of the first appeal, unless, in the opinion of four members of the board, substantial new evidence shall be brought forward, or unless four members of the board find in their sole and exclusive judgment that an error or mistake of law or a misunderstanding of fact has been made. So, that says you can't pummel the board with the same stuff over and over again. Did the legal lease go through on that one? And is the timing of this such that, you're saying we have heard this?
I'm suggesting that about 15 minutes ago, you made a decision on this. And so, and I think it was referenced by Mr. Sausier, that he actually referenced within Leah's findings, specifically what page it was referenced as well.
It's at the bottom of page nine of the previous ruling. And it's what lawyers would call res judicata, which is a Latin term, meaning it's already been decided. In fact, it's decided tonight by this panel.
So, is it, if we accept the wisdom and follow 707, is it appropriate to pass it by with reference to 707? Or is it appropriate to vote on it and then explain it by, you know, nothing else than 707?
Well, I don't think 707 is applicable here, because this is not a reapplication. This is a new application for a code enforcement officer action. So I think that if the friends of Rockport or whomever want to file a reapplication, they can do so, but they haven't done so yet.
Okay, and perhaps I misunderstood Tyler's remark. We had already taken care of it. You're looking for consistency rather than a timing issue.
No, I think it's just a particular interpretation that Mr. Hall has of the ordinance wording.
Number one, we've already decided this issue. Number two, if the friends of Rockport want to come back within six months after the fact and say, we'd like to reapply for a new appeal, they can do so. But they haven't done so yet.
They can do so, but it's likely to be, without any new stuff, it's likely to be shut down.
Yes.
Yeah.
It's likely, but they can reapply if they have new evidence to supply.
I think we are making the argument that 707 relates to all appeals with regard to the project, and I believe Mr. Hall is interpreting it as specific, a specific appeal.
Well, it has to be a second appeal affecting the same premises and requiring a similar decision. So I would say it was obviously 20, the hotel, and also either the permit or the planning board approval.
Yeah, our interpretation is that a similar decision would have to be made by this board, because the appellants basically have taken the same argument and have crossed out the word planning board and just put code officer.
Yeah.
To me, that requires the same decision made by this board.
Well, as I say, we've already decided the same issue earlier this evening. Now, six months from now, if they come up with some new evidence, they want a new appeal, they can try.
Right, but that's totally out of our hands. So, Leah, is there any, I mean, you use past is not necessarily prologue. There are two approaches to finishing up this particular first point.
Yes.
Do you have any suggestions as to which approach?
I do. And it falls into the category of abundance of caution, which we've heard those words mentioned before. I absolutely appreciate the arguments being made. But, you know, when I think about administrative raised judicata, that's a mouthful, but that is essentially what has been said, is that the decision has been made, right? But when I think about, again, raised judicata, it's between the same party or their privies, and I think the issue is very, very similar. There's no getting around that. And there's also the fact that one is as relates to the planning board, and one is as relates to the code enforcement officer, in my view. And out of an abundance of caution, as much as we enjoy spending time together, I think that we want to preclude additional appealable issues. You've already talked about it. I think you have a basis for finding, and it seems to me that we should just make them in order to head off at the path of another possible appeal.
Rather than rule as res judicata, we rule on the merits of the issue.
Right.
Exactly, which I think it's fair to say you've already done largely, but it could be catered, or I should say tailored, to the particular issue around code enforcement officer as opposed to planning board.
Yeah, we seem to be sailing the ship into that harbor. Do I hear a motion on the points raised on number one? I look to Bob, who's doing a really good job of keeping his motions straight.
I move that we deny the appeal on the basis, number one, that the Superior Court did not see that, did not determine that a site plan amendment was necessary, even though the maximum size of the hotel rooms would be reduced, and that the code officer's permit was supported by substantial evidence and was not an abusive discretion.
Thank you, second?
Second.
Excellent. Discussion on the discussion.
Mr. Chairman, if I might just ask for clarification there, I heard the motion being framed in terms of deny the appeal. I think, I just want to clarify, the intention there was to deny that particular round of appeal, because you still have five others. I just wanted to make sure that that was clear.
Thank you. I think that, let's allow Bob a chance to, the prologue leading up to it would help, but will you do it in Bob's words?
I think you could just add the word first, first appeal.
Well, the first point.
The panel denies the first basis of appeal of the code enforcement officer.
Second, okay with that?
Yes.
All right, are we ready to vote? Gentlemen in the white shirt.
Aye.
Yes. Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Five to zero. Moving on to number two. Planning board was required to review the traffic and parking study. Leah, you want to give us the overview of that?
Sure. I mean, I'm just, again, reading from the appeal itself, the town of Brockport Land use ordinance, section 8, code 3.1, sub 5, requires the planning board, not code enforcement officer, to review the traffic and parking study. The study must be remanded to the planning board for review.
All right. Gentlemen on the table and on Zoom, and I see Phil's hand is up.
Yeah, again, and Scott, if you'd chime in, I think, I just want to cut this one off of the past two. This is just like the last one, for sake of argument, I want to point this out, the board has already determined this in the previous, previous adoption of findings of fact. Again, just so I give you the specific references, in the conclusions of law, subsection E, what the board just adopted, so the board previously found in the other appeal, the planning board was not required to review and consider a parking study for 20 Central Street Hotel project on remand, correctly noting that the amendment notes that either the code enforcement officer or the planning board would receive the traffic study. And I think separately, as we just went over, the court did not disturb the site plan approval. There was nothing for the planning board to do as it relates to the new amendments in the court's findings, other than a remand on the specific issues under the old ordinance. So I would just leave it at that. I think this was pretty straightforward, similar to the last one.
All right, anything else from counsel? Oh, yeah, there we go. Go ahead. Is that? Yes.
Me?
Yeah, please.
Okay, yeah, thank you. One, and I apologize for doing it, but I'm going to raise my section 707 argument each time, just so it's in the record. But again, this argument is similar to their premise of number four in the prior planning board appeal, which was already decided by this board. In addition to that, I will just indicate that with respects to this land use ordinance, section 803, that there, at the time, there was more than just the planning board that had authority over that particular section as well. The zoning board of appeals actually had to review our off-site parking requirement. So to now suggest that only the planning board has the ability on remand to kind of review the traffic study, I think, doesn't necessarily get at the initial intention of section 803. At that particular time, it was the planning board, CEO, and zoning board of appeals that all had jurisdiction over, relative to considering the parking standards. And in this particular instance, as Attorney Sausier has indicated, the court kept the two issues separate, remanding this particular issue back, or vacating the building permit as related to the amendment to section 803. And so the CEO had the authority, if you will, to take into consideration the traffic study, imply that traffic study to his determination relative to the building permit.
All right. Any questions and/or comments? And do we hear a motion? Several ways to skin this one.
I just want to say, I strongly agree, because I'm looking at the page, you know, 8-5 of section 803, and it's, even to a layperson, it is so clear that, number one, as we've said ad infinitum, that either the CEO or the planning board has the authority to review. And then, that second paragraph, it says amendment to five, and it's clear that that is part of that, and therefore it falls under the umbrella of either the CEO or the planning board. And this refers to the traffic study. So I, I'm dumbfounded that this was even brought up again, because it's right there.
Sometimes in our reports, in our written stuff, we have things that are maybe a little truncated or just glossed over. Scott, do you want to take an opportunity to tell us more fully what was behind your own? Although that's, I just want to make sure that that's not going to come up later.
Mr. Chairman, I think that that may be, if your question to the code enforcement officer is with reference to the actual parking and traffic study itself, and his thoughts around that, and whether the standards were met, my sense is that it's probably better taken up in a subsequent round of appeal, which specifically asks about that.
Yeah, I think you're right. I was looking at my notes.
And let counsel or any of the other parties disagree.
No, I agree, this is just, no, this is just, yeah, I agree, that's subsection four of the appeal letter.
Yeah.
Any questions?
All right. So do I hear a motion on, this is on number two?
I have a motion.
Yes, sir.
The code enforcement officer, I move as follows. The code enforcement officer approving the traffic and parking study is in accordance with section 803.1, paren five, and paren of the land use ordinance.
Marvelous. Any seconds?
Second.
Any discussion? Sorry, we're trying to cover.
Sorry, Kevin, I didn't know you were leaning in, as it were.
Survive.
Any further comments? Any voting? Let's start on Bob's end.
I vote aye.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Five to zero. All right. We are on point number three, which was the independence of the Goral Palmer Traffic and Parking Study. Ms. Ration, would you like to?
Yeah, sure, I mean, that is exactly right. It's about questioning whether or not it was independent, that that section 803.1 Sub 5 called for an independent traffic study. The suggestion that Goral Palmer was not independent, given that they, and I'm just reading from the allegations, that they regularly work with Gartley and Dorsky and the 20 Central Streets LLC principles. So that's, you know, that's the claim, and the party should address that now.
Yes. I just, I want to particularly hear your dulcet voice and not mine. Terry question, and then we'll go to our.
Sure.
I have a question, because, and maybe they can, it says, it says that this traffic study, prepared by qualified professionals in the ordinances, should be hired by the reviewing authority. It's paid for by the applicant, but the applicant is not the reviewing authority. Who was the, who have we identified as the reviewing authority? Like, who, who is the, what's a hiring agency platform?
Yeah, I can answer that. The reviewing authority refers, in this case, it would be the code enforcement officer where the, in the sense that it was being submitted to, as part of the building permit. So, and actually, this is one that I do want, I would like to hear two of the town staff speak, I'd like the code officer and the planner, who I believe is in the room, but I just want to give a quick overview from our side, from the town's side of it, and obviously the hotel can speak to themselves. But the town certainly did go through an independent process, which required by the ordinance, the town put out an RFP, so it didn't independently select. It put an RFP out to bid, consistent with the town's procurement policy, which it was under a certain amount, so it needed three bids, made sure there was no conflicting interest, meaning that none of the applicants were involved in this particular project, and then it was selected. This was selected based on the strength of the application, that's what I'll let Orion speak to and Scott, but I just wanted that to be in the record, that this was, it went through an RFP process. The town made the decision that there were, that this particular firm was not involved in this application, and it is what it is at that point. So before the code enforcement is done on this one, I want to make sure that Scott or Orion could sort of weigh in on the process from the town's side.
Scott, press it in, all right?
I'm selecting it.
Yeah, I'll be happy to jump in on this one, just so I get a chance to speak a little bit. Orion and I did talk about this, and out of the proposals, I was looking at the lesser expensive one, and we talked about that and discussed it. The one that we went with had a lot more detail, and we knew detail was important, so that's why we went with this outfit. And I have no knowledge of any associations that they may have around town, and I'm sure they probably do, I just don't know about it.
And speaking of that further, on the Rockport bidding purchase orders, that was followed with the town manager.
In that process, so we went and we got four quotes, we're just required three, I got four, and Goral Palmer was the least expensive of the four.
Thank you.
And I'm happy to speak on behalf of the developer, so we haven't utilized Randy Dunton or Goral Palmer for any of our current projects or past projects. In 2005, we were partner projects where they may have been utilized, but we couldn't find record of it, so, but they, I believe they are probably utilized like Gartley Dorsky at times, who did our foundation in site work engineering for us, but nothing directly.
All right, thank you. Any other questions from us, and then we'll go and touch base with you guys? Oh, yes, Stuart, please, yeah, on the podium.
This is in Ms. Collins' memo here. This just smacks of some of the stuff that she keeps putting out, is half-truths. And I sent this to Will Gartley, and then Will sent it on to Randy Dunton. I want to be very clear, I'd never even heard of Goral Palmer before, and certainly they have not done a lot of work. They've done, as far as I can see, no work for me at all, ever. And the email that I got back from Will Gartley, and he was going to be here tonight, but he couldn't make it, I'll just read this for the record. "I just spoke with Randy Dunton regarding Kristen's letter. He was not pleased. Randy said that Kristen called him recently, asking him to confirm that he made the statements in number three of her letter, and he told her that he did not recall making those statements and would not confirm. As I mentioned, I don't recall ever hiring Randy to work on a Smith project, and he doesn't recall ever working on one through us or directly for the Smith family. So her claim is false. He did say that he denied her original request to work for the Friends of Rockport because of his relationship with Gartley and Dorsky, but he did not feel that there was a conflict doing a review for the town. He said that he often reviews the work of peers and vice versa. He also thought it was ironic that in number three, she claims the report was not independent, but in then number four is upset that the CEO didn't consider the GP report, Gordon Palmer report. Again, she wants it both ways. Randy was hesitant about me making these statements and would prefer that they came from the town since they were his client." Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I just make one procedural point here?
Yes, please.
If I may. So, you know, I know this is, there are certain allegations made and people are responding to them, but I do want to say that, you know, this is an appellate review, it's not de novo, so taking evidence, I think we need to be careful of that. I will note, though, that in Attorney Collins' letter to the board, she did specifically request that there be questions asked with respect to this issue of independence. And so with that said, I understand that there's a little leeway there, but I do want to be careful that we don't open up, you know, that the decision is really put being based on the record before the board.
Thank you for your diligence.
Just echoing that, also, she says that this is a de novo review, which it is not.
Yeah.
Right, and that's why I think we need to be pretty circumspect about how much evidence is, if any, I think we need to get back on track and look really within the record itself.
All right, thank you. While the record is a long and exhaustive report by them, any comments, any more comments from counsel? And we do have a member of the public here, any public comments on this particular subsection of the appeal? And any discussion and/or motions from the board?
Well, independent has specific meaning in terms of conflicts. I'm a lawyer, I've worked in law firms, I'm an arbitrator, I have to reveal all conflicts, and it doesn't mean that somewhere in the past, you may have known somebody or worked for somebody. It means, do you have a current financial arrangement or familial interest in this particular matter? And unless you can come up with those, the fact that you may have known somebody, you may have done some work in the distant past, does not make somebody not independent. And particularly in mid-coast Maine, where you don't have a thousand of these kind of contractors around, it's not surprising that there would be some contacts of some sort over a period of time. So we need, we need hard evidence that shows that there is no, that there's no independence, that is evidence that is a current financial or familial relationship, and I'm not seeing any evidence of that here.
All right. Any further discussion?
I just want to say, I was satisfied with the description of the actual hiring process, and it was put out to bid, and it was done by the town, and so there doesn't seem to be any heavy or hidden hand behind the scenes on the involved parties. So I was satisfied with that description.
Okay. Any motions?
I have a motion.
Please.
I move that this appeal be, on this point, be denied because the appellant's have not provided sufficient evidence that the Goral Palmer Traffic and Parking Study was not, quote, "independent," unquote, within the meaning of section 803.1, paren five, and paren of the land use ordinance, or that the CEO's decision was an abuse of discretion or was not supported by sufficient evidence, or substantial evidence, I'm sorry. Do you want me to read that again?
Sure, one more time, and then you have it.
I move that we deny this point of appeal because the appellant's have not provided sufficient evidence that the Goral Palmer Traffic and Parking Study was not, quote, "independent," unquote, within the meaning of section 803.1, paren five, and paren of the land use ordinance, or that the code enforcement officer's decision was an abuse of discretion or was not supported by substantial evidence. Period.
Right. Any seconds?
I'll second.
Kevin for the second. Any final discussion? Starting with Max?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Five to zero, thank you. We're on to number four, the CEO did not apply the findings of the parking and traffic study.
Jeff, can I make one note just for the record?
Yes, please.
The submittal that was provided by Ms. Collins on the, I believe, the 31st.
Is that, yeah, the three-page letter, yeah?
Yeah, it does have a different numbering at this point, so.
Okay.
I think it's great if you continue the numbering associated on the original appeal.
I'll do that, I'll do that. So number four is actually the code enforcement officer erred in failing to apply the shared parking standards applicable to the hotel, and failing to consider the competing demands on the Sandy Ways lot as required by the land use ordinance, section 803.1, paren six.
Can I just have a quarter board, I'm not sure where you're reading from. I'm looking at Ms. Collins' May 31, I thought we were working off the May 31st letter.
Well, we were, it was just pointed out that her numbering, when she gets to number four, it does not coincide with the four on the administrative appeal dated, who knows, because there's no date on it.
Yeah, and I will say, my suggestion, Mr. Chairman, is absolutely to follow what is on the appeal itself. Those leaders submissions, while you accepted them, they are in the nature, I think, of advocacy, not the grounds of the appeal themselves. So I think the best way to go is just read from those six grounds. That's certainly not to say that you don't entertain the argument made in that May 31st submission, but the grounds themselves, I think, are those that were set forth in the appeal within the specified appeal period.
I think she notes to that in her letter as well, that her letter doesn't necessarily speak to every single grounds of appeal.
Right, she trails off and says that the remaining, speak for themselves. We do have a date on the appeals application that we're working on, which is June 23rd, 2021, it appears to be. No, I'm sorry, that's actually the document.
Yeah, I'm just saying that's down at the bottom, I don't know that.
Yeah, no, that's when the document was last reformatted, because that would be too long ago for this. All right, so number four, shared parking standards applicable to the hotel and failing to consider the competing demands on Sandy Ways lot. Anybody want to give us an overview? And I see Andre.
I don't want to give an overview, I want to give an argument.
You're a well-sharpened sword, go ahead.
I, in my mind, this one clearly falls within the realm of section 707, in that this is specifically speaking to the issue of whether or not the Sandy Ways parking lot is a shared, a shared parking lot, whether or not the standard had to be applied relative to shared, shared use. The planning board already made a decision on that, you guys have already upheld that decision, and they're now trying to indicate that as a result, based on the building permit now, that the CEO has to make a determination with respect to the shared use. And again, that's already, that's already been decided. And there's not any, there isn't any new evidence or new facts before this board now, which speaks to why Sandy Ways lot should be deemed a shared lot.
Yeah, and since we're on a de novo, we probably shouldn't have any. All right, gentlemen, at the table. And/or Mr. Sossier.
Well, sure, Scott doesn't want to speak first.
On the parking?
The shared parking issue?
That, that was. That shared parking was actually part of Goral Palmer's review, and we actually gained spots.
Yeah, and I would also just add on to that to say that this is also something that the planning board had already decided, and the zoning board has upheld, as Attorney Bueschett just said. It's not an issue that was really before the code officer in any way, it was not disturbed, I should say it was disturbed by the court. The court sent that back down to the planning board for additional findings, and the planning board did make additional substantial findings on this issue. And this board, the zoning board, has upheld that.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? And before the board goes into deliberation, any comments from the public? Seeing none. Any comments, questions, and/or motions?
I have a motion. I move that this point of appeal be denied because the issue of shared parking applicable to the hotel and the demands on the Sandy Way lot are moot, since this issue was remanded by the Superior Court to the planning board, which ruled on it, with such ruling being appealed previously to the Zoning Board of Appeals and denied. Period.
So that's a recitation of history that we just got from there?
In substance, yes.
Yes. Second to that motion?
I'll second.
Okay. And does that do everything we want it to do?
I think so.
Okay. Then in that case, no further discussion on the motion? Question? All right, starting with Max.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Five to zero, thank you very much. Moving on to administrative appeal, point number five. The code enforcement officer erred in failing to address concerns raised in the Goral Palmer Traffic Studies, specifically, quote, "the valet parking component of the so-called, the, in quotes, parking system," unquote, "could cause safety concerns," end of quote. This overlooks the Town of Rockport Land Use Ordinance, section 803.1, parentheses, five, which states that the study must establish, quote, "that the parking facility is adequate for the proposed use and any shared uses will not cause undue burdens on traffic or parking in the vicinity and will not cause safety concerns," end of quote.
I can make a comment on this if you want.
Yes, please.
Yeah, so the Goral Palmer report referenced some of the original discussion of valet, and one of the types of operations we were originally looking at was utilizing e-bike valet service, which is getting pretty popular in a lot of areas. areas. Um, and I think, you know, that was, that was done as a, uh, an alternative to a traditional valet service, which would use, you know, vans and other vehicles. And so, uh, and you can reference, actually, within the appendix of the Gorrel Palmer Report, um, it has, uh, some statements by Twenty Central, um, discussing the, uh, I'm going to read it from the Gorrel Palmer Report for you. Uh, "The off-site parking lot and valet service does not hinge on e-bikes working. The proposal to utilize e-bikes is based on their success supporting valet services for other hotels in New England and their ability to meet our company's environmental goals. If the, if we determine the using e-bikes compromises the safety of our employees, the public level of service, or technical feasibility, they will not be used, and we would utilize traditional shuttle vehicles to support our valet service."
Yep. Scott?
And if I may just add to that, that was kind of a prediction from the attorney, I think. Uh, there's no evidence that it's factual. We don't know that it would be dangerous. We perceive that it could be, just looking, walking down the side of the street, so I don't think it holds any merit.
Terry?
I have questions of both of you on this. This is the only issue that actually does concern me, and maybe I didn't get it right, and maybe I'm mudging both the M, the MDOT and the, uh, the traffic study. I, I put the traffic study up, but my laptop's so large, I didn't want to obliterate the screen. So, this was my takeaway, um, was that either or both did raise questions about the safety of the e-bikes. Both, um, and again, I just can't remember which one or both, with the e-bikes, for instance, going out onto Route One in the opposite direction. In any case, I felt that, that that had been raised and that the use of e-bikes was not recommended. And, and I started looking at it in a different light once there was more detail and there was professional analysis of this. Um, and so I don't know at what point it's appropriate for a board member like me to bring it up, but I would like to see that in the building use permit, that it would, that they would not be allowed, that they would be required to use actual valet vehicle. Um, and in which case, you know, the e-bikes are not going to be useful in the winter or during the rain or whatever, whatever. But, you know, the more I read that MDOT ingress egress and reading the traffic study, I, I, whether my comprehension was correct or not, I came away with a very clear picture that they felt that they did pose a safety hazard, both to the operator of the e-bike and the traffic enlarged, particularly along Route One in the summer, pulling out and, um, you know, that that should be done by a regular car, that other cars can see clearly as well, just for starters. So, however that might be appropriately, if, if it would be appropriately, that was my only thing coming in here tonight that I would like to see in the building is that, that they not be, um, allowed or whatever kind of thing you use. I, I think it should be an, an actual valet vehicle if they're using a valet service. Yeah, I changed my mind on the e-bikes.
Okay. So, un- under your, I mean, you used to wear the hat of being on the planning board, where this was a normal thing, um, to have conditions. I'm wondering for the ZBA, if, if the board were to see wisdom in that and, and vote that, how we incorporate a limitation like that in? I mean, we are basically stepping into the shoes of, of the, of the GP study.
Well, no, I was thinking that it would, would be excuse, I hope I'm not, um, going, uh, betting in here, but that this would be the appropriate review, as we're doing right now, of the building use permit, and, and did the code officer, um, correctly and fully apply, uh, the results of this traffic study and the MDOT, and, and is that reflected fully and properly in the building permit? If I've got this right, then I would say, um, no, because that should be added, and I don't see it anywhere in here. Now, don't know if my take is correct or not, but, um, I think, I think this, this building permit accurately and fully reflected the recommendations of the traffic study and MDOT, that it should specifically reference that the use of e-bikes is not recommended.
Scott?
I would have preferred that he had husk and buggies. They would have had the right of way, and we wouldn't have the issue. But, MDOT didn't dictate that they couldn't use a bicycle, or electric bicycle, or motor scooter, or motorcycles, or anything. So, I don't see how we can be selective that way. If MDOT allows those to travel on the road, and that is the old Route One,
Right.
then I don't think we have any control over that. That would be up to MDOT.
But wasn't there something that, that I wasn't remembering?
I saw it as suggestive.
In, in the traffic study, though, they definitely, what did you see?
That was in the traffic study
Right.
done by the person, and it was, looked to me like it was suggestive as a caution, but it wasn't saying, "You should not do that," period.
Fair enough.
So, I'm, I'm wondering, um, I'll look around in a second, but I'm wondering, to your point, whether, uh, e-bikes, which I believe are governed at, uh, thirty miles an hour, uh, even the souped-up ones, um, that's what my son tells me because he just bought one, um, whether that's actually a traffic calming, uh, item along Pascal at least. And, and then, I mean, you do have that right-hand turn that, that brings you back up to, that's a thirty-five mile an hour speed.
You have a left-hand turn onto Route One around, and anyway, I don't think that we have the authority to go back in and parse these out as much as I have
Right.
same and interesting questions. Um, I would prefer to focus solely on the language, which the code officer has pointed out correctly. It doesn't say, "No," but they do make a statement about the e-bikes, and I think we should focus on that specific language that is presented by the independent study hired by the reviewing authority, and see if we feel that that should be included in the building permit. In other words, should Mr. Bickford, the code officer, have put that, anything in there? I don't, I'm not saying I'm right, I'm wrong. I'm just, I'm raising it as, should that be in there to, to meet this thing that, that he fully applied the, um, the safety concerns traffic study?
I see waving hands, I'll be right there.
Am I, am I get, am I getting to?
Yep, you're, you're about to have a response by at least two gentlemen.
Well.
Let's go, uh, let's go with Andre on top, all because he's on top of the list, and then we'll go to Phil.
I have a sneaky suspicion I'm going to say the same thing that Attorney Saucier was about to say, but, again, based on your, your review standard, it's whether or not the code enforcement officer, uh, committed clear error or, or, you know, applied something that wasn't in the record. Um, and so I, again, I, I, I respect the, the concern, but the question is, is based on the report and based on the CEO's review of that report, as well as the information before him, whether or not he committed clear error in making the decision that he did relative to the building permit?
Is, I, I gotta interrupt for just a second. Is, is clear and, um, oh, I'm sorry, I just had the word, uh, never mind, I forgot the word. It's, yeah, never mind. Egregious, egregious. Is, is clear in this case, uh, the same as an egregious error?
Well, it's not supported by substantial evidence.
Yeah, and, and I just wanted, Mr. Chairman, I did want to clarify something. I, I absolutely understand, um, Attorney Bichette's, uh, you know, recitation of the standard of review, but it does not state clear error. I think what he's thinking is abusive discretion. There is abuse of discretion, and then also, um, as the member said, not supported by substantial evidence, right? And so, I think we've talked, I can give you a quick, quick, quick little primer on the substantial evidence standard. Um, that does not mean that you could come to a different conclusion. Basically, what it means is, is if a reasonable mind would accept that, or if, basically, if there's enough evidence to support that conclusion, even if you disagree with it, you need to support it. So, um,
Right.
that, that's what substantial evidence means. And, and I'm sure, you know, counsel may have a different interpretation of that, but, but that's mine. It's not whether you agree and whether, based on the evidence in front of you, you could come to a different conclusion. It's whether that evidence supports the conclusion.
All right, Phil?
Yeah, so, um, so Leah said it better than I could, and I was about to also just remind the board, is this an appellate review? And so, you're, you're not stepping in the shoes of the code officer, unlike if you would have been de novo in the past. So, it really is just, you know, did Scott base his decision on substantial evidence in the record? Um, not that he would have come to a different conclusion, but was it reasonable that he, the conclusion he came to? And in this case, um, and we, we haven't mentioned one of the standards, and it's just for the record, I want to touch upon the other recommendation in this report, because I don't think anyone's mentioned it. Um, the, the two, the two areas where the reviewer sort of highlighted, if you will, one was this off-site, um, lot evaluation, and you had come to the conclusion it was not proven to be safe until, um, they got their MDOT permit. And so, of course, the, they did get their MDOT permit, and the MDOT found that it was, um, they met the MDOT key standards, and so that was noted right in, um, the building permit. So, that was sort of satisfied. They satisfied that condition. Um, I would say the same for the parking valet system, which would have been part of that review. Um, and Scott, in his role as CEO, took everything into consideration, right? So, it, he has to, he has to take this traffic study into consideration, he has to take the application, he has to take the fact that the MDOT issued a permit to, for the use of this lot as an off-site facility and the entrance, the, uh, through an entrance permit. And so, it, it seems to me that it does meet the standard of review, the appellate standard of review, um, and it's, which is a more deferential point of view. Um, that doesn't mean, um, you know, you could, from the, you know, that Scott, in his role as CEO, could watch what goes on there and, you know, going forward, um, and maybe there's adjustments that are made. But in terms of the standard review you're looking at, to me, it's, it's, you know, was it based in substantial evidence, uh, but not, not necessarily a decision you would have made, but was his, was his decision supported. Thank you.
Thank you, Max.
Then in that case, if this report said it, this e-bike situation will undoubtedly cause issues, if it said that there was no question that this was, but it doesn't, it says
Maybe unsafe.
maybe unsafe. Having dealt with engineers in the past, I've never met an engineer that wasn't purposefully vague about things that they not want to be liable for down the road. So, I think that.
Could you read that sentence out loud that you're looking?
Which one?
The bu- the, the last one?
Yeah, this is a summary statement they made.
"In our opinion, the current, uh, proposed valet parking component of the parking system could cause safety concerns," could cause safety concerns, sure.
Talking about the e-bikes.
Talking about the e-bikes, yeah. That's what this whole paragraph is about.
That's what I saw, so, I just want a clarification on that.
Yep. Yeah.
Any other, Orion, was that a, that was a stretch? Yeah, okay. Seventh inning stretch, is that?
Let's ask, let's ask, uh, the code enforcement officer, why do you think use of e-bikes will not be a problem?
Well, I don't know that they won't be a problem. A bicycle without electric could be a problem, but we see bicycles on the road all the time. In fact, we see them out in the middle of the road too often, and that could be a problem, too. It's a mode of transportation, and I don't feel like I'm one to condemn anything that the main Department of Transportation allows on their roads. If they didn't want tractor-trailers on that road, they wouldn't allow it. So, as long as these aren't registered, they don't have to be registered, I think that they're well within their right to, to use any mode of transportation that the DOT allows on the highway. Rather, I like it not.
All right, thank you. Any other comments, questions, motions, for what is being labeled as number five, I believe? Yes. Five out of six, I might add. Bobby has such a good way of, of double negatives of denying error.
I move on this point that the code enforcement officer has not abused discretion and has used substantial evidence to support his decision concerning the, uh, parking study and shared parking.
Next one?
Second.
Second, Terry. Back in the groove. Comments?
Should, should we specifically mention safety concerns? Did you mention that? Did I?
I, I think I did.
Did you?
If I did, not sure.
Or did not err in failing to address concerns raised in the Gorrel Palmer Traffic Study?
Second offers, motion makers, accepts?
Yes, I accept that as a friendly amendment.
All right, starting with Bob.
Aye.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Five to zero. We have our last point coming up. How are the dulcet tones?
It's my big moment, all right?
Yeah, good, well, it's, it's the finale.
I'll bring it home. I'll bring it home. The code enforcement officer erred in failing to apply the Town of Rockport Land Use Ordinance, section one thousand and three, regarding preservation of scenic views, open quote, "Structure shall impede as little as reasonably practical. Scenic views from the main road or from existing structures in nearby undeveloped areas," end quote. Despite the reduction of rooms from the original thirty-four room proposal to the current twenty-room proposal, the ground-level footprint of the structure remains unchanged, and there is no evidence of any review of alternatives designed by the code enforcement officer.
Well, I thank you. Any comments from the gentleman behind the table, or the remaining gentleman on the?
That sounds so familiar to me. I think I've heard that before, almost like it's an old apple being rebitten.
Well.
Do you come here often?
It's called deja vu all over again.
Yeah.
That's right.
Views, views, views.
Seems like that was addressed, but not in the remand by the court. And that was not an issue, but now all of a sudden it is an issue after the remand. And I, I concentrated on the remand, but I did also follow the planning board in their review. And I think that everything remains basically the same, except there's less number of rooms, and all the site plan is the same as, had been processed before. So, I approved it as I did once before. I didn't see any change.
And Leah, you're looking like you're, uh, quickly looking something up. Oh, I think you're on the screen.
Sorry, I was just looking at the court orders, and, um, you know, again, I think counsel can speak to that, but I think the scenic view issue frankly has been asked and answered, and I think the court, um, while there may not have been clarity on all the issues, I think the court makes fairly clear that the scenic view issue is done.
The court ruled, the court ruled in favor of the Town and Twenty Central on, on the scenic view issue. It's done.
Yes, that's my, that's my interpretation, but I'd sure like to hear from counsel, um, from their perspective.
Yeah, this is Phil Saucier. I agree, and I, just to be consistent with the way I've presented this the last few times, I do want to point out that the board has already found this in the last appeal, as Scott alluded to. Um, that is subsection I of the decision you just adopted previously this evening on page eleven, that, um, the board had already concluded the twenty-twenty-one spirit board order, already determined the planning board did not err when, when, on the view issue. So, this is an issue you already talked about. The court's dealt with it. It's not even the code officer's jurisdiction, um, just a separate issue, but I think, um, straightforward issue is that it's already been dealt with by the court. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
Does that?
Yeah. Is that Andre?
Yeah, not to further add.
Okay, nothing further for us. Yep. All right. Anyone want to propose an amendment, a, um, motion?
Yes. Uh, I move that, um, on this issue, uh, I move that on the issue of scenic views related to fewer rooms in the hotel, that this has already been determined by the Superior Court in favor of the Town of Rockport and Twenty- favor of the Town of Rockport and 20 Central and therefore should not be revisited.
Any second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Given the length of the second, anybody have any tonal questions about that?
Oh, I, only to be nitpicky, and again, I don't know if it's appropriate as it was in the one prior, given it's sort of a different basis, but shall we add that the code enforcement officer therefore did not err in failing to apply, which is also slightly different? It's like, not only did he not err, but it was also the court order. But maybe under a abundance of caution, just add that did not err in failing to apply Town of Rockport Land Use Ordinance, Section 1003, or is that not necessary?
I would take it as a friendly amendment to add that the code enforcement officer did not abuse his discretion and that his decision was based on substantial evidence.
Excellent. And Max, you seconded that?
I'm okay with that, yes.
Okay, thank you. Two-prong sword. Any other comments, questions about this before we vote? All right, hearing, oh, sorry, got Andre, is that a wave? Oh, okay. Starting with Max.
Yes.
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 Six, five, I'm sorry, five, zero. Make up a number. Leah, why don't you tell us our next steps?
Yes, happy to. So I think much like in times past, as the board is probably aware, under the statute, a written decision is required within seven days, you have not taken your final vote and therefore time in my mind is not yet ticking in that regard. I think what we've done in the past, I think what works well and what I would recommend is to allow Ben and myself to present you with some draft findings in advance of your next meeting, which you can, you know, undertake your independent review as you have in the past, and you can vote on them at your next meeting. So if that works for you all, that's what I will do.
Orion, question for you. If we, can we have a Zoom meeting, excuse me, if we have no other things to meet about, can we have a Zoom meeting to ratify these final findings of fact? Okay. So that is an option. Thank you. Excellent. So hearing no closing votes, shall we? So I think the intent of the board is to, yes, have you do that, Leah? I don't think that that needs a vote.
I guess, maybe, I'm not sure what your meeting, what your, I think you meet as needed, right? So...
Effectively, we probably have one of those third Thursdays of the month.
Sure, sure.
But as needed is fine.
Sure, and I just, obviously, I'm not sure. Do you want to schedule a meeting with a date certain while you have folks there, or do you want to maybe think about that, find about availability?
Well, I think everybody in the room would feel comfortable, would feel better knowing when we at least project that this will be finalized. Is that a reasonable way of going about things?
Yes.
So, how about the fourth? No. So we are sitting here on Thursday the second.
I am available next week, the week after that I'm out of town.
Are you electronically available?
In the, I'm conducting an arbitration in Chicago, and so during the day I will not be available, in the evening I will.
Okay.
And I'll be out of town June 8th through returning late the evening of June 20th, but I will be taking my work with me and I can be available electronically during that time, but I couldn't be here in person.
Yep, understood. Max, how's your?
I'm flexible.
You work any 20 hours a day you want to.
Yeah.
I'm a problem.
Your problem?
Because I'm moving on June 17th, out of town forever.
Well.
So we have to meet before then.
I'll be in DC on the 16th, but how about, what is, actually, we have a select board member here who might be able to opine on timing.
Don't we have to do this in seven days?
I'll be glad to do it afterwards, because it'll be close, but I don't know whether that's allowed or not.
Yeah, I don't know whether there's sort of an overlap time or when you're still getting stuff out or...
Can we do it next week?
Yeah.
That's a Leah question.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's do it next week.
Ben is in the corner towering.
I am, I am sensitive to the fact that the findings have to be drafted and circulated and a week might be too quick. I am complying with Ben, I'm trying to, I haven't heard back from him yet, but I would just ask that we could do it a little bit further out than a week.
Yeah. Well, how about the 16th?
I'm sure that, we can make that happen, I just didn't know if somebody's, if that's moving day, that might not work, but...
No, we're moved.
Yeah, yeah, we don't, we don't care about whether it hurts or not.
What day of the week is that?
Thursday.
But will you have internet connection still on that day?
Yeah, we're, yeah, we're already in elsewhere and I can come here, I'm just in Jefferson, so it doesn't matter.
Yeah, well, I think I can do it from Chicago.
Typically, you can, yeah, and we can work around your time offset in the time.
It's an hour time difference, so I'd say it works in my favor.
Yeah, okay.
But it's okay that he's not, I mean, what constitutes being a resident of Rockport and him having the basis to vote and stuff, is that?
Prior to closing on his primary.
June 17th is closing, so 16th is fine.
Okay, now I'm, so it wasn't just moving day, but that's when it's closing and you're no longer a property owner? Great, all right, thanks.
We will absolutely get those to you, you know, before the 16th.
16th, okay.
Excellent. Gentlemen, any questions from you? Anything we can answer this august body here? All right. Very good. Call for a adjournment.
I move for a adjournment.
Second?
All in flavor. Chocolate. Perfect.
So is it going to be on the 16th for sure or just?
Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.
Thank you.